Today is November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Lee County Board of Commissioners will convene if we could have the invocation by Pastor Will Kitchen from the First Assembly of God.
Amen. Bow with me as we pray. Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy today that follows us, that prepares every day for us and is brand new. We thank you for this great state and this great county, Lord, and the ability to gather before you today. We thank you for every leader that you've called to guide and to govern. And, Lord, we just pray for a spirit of wisdom and truth and peace today to guide every conversation. Lord, we just pray that every issue be resolved and everything that would be discussed, Lord, would reach a conclusion and an end. And, Lord, would bring about justice, would bring about harmony, would bring about goodness. Lord, we just thank you for it, Lord. We thank you for your blessings. We thank you for protection, your provision, and every single thing that you do. Lord, we love you and we honor you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited to the.
Thank you, Pastor. Now go to the annual reorganization of Board of County Commissioners. I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pleasure to be here this morning. Honored to preside over this portion of your meeting when you prepare to pass the gavel. We've done this a couple of times in my short career as clerk and comptroller. So we will start the meeting by taking nominations. As a reminder, there are no seconds needed for that. So with that, we'll open the floor to nominations for the upcoming chair for the next year.
Mr. Clerk, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Cecil Pendergrass for chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammond. Any other nominations for consideration?
I move we close nominations.
Nominations being closed, we'll take a voice vote. Commissioner Hammond, would you like to move eye or knife for the new chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Pendergrass?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruane?
Yes.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Well, next order of business, we need to nominate a vice chair. With that, I will nominate Commissioner Malika.
Well, there's no second needed, but I'll second it anyways.
Thank you.
Any other nominations from the floor?
Move we close nominations.
Okay. Any public comment on the nomination? Okay, come back. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you to my board members and thank you to all the staff of Lee County. And I just want to say thank you, Commissioner Wayne. It's been a tough year for all of us, for you and your family. We as a board, we lost colleagues this year. You had a tragic loss in your families. Again, thank you. Did a wonderful job this past year representing the Board of County Commissioners and thank you for your service. And I look forward to representing the board and their direction over the next year in the community as this greater organization we call One Work, Lee County Government. So again, thank you. And with that, also, we need to make another nomination. This time, this time of year, we have to nominate a new VAB value adjustment board members. I've been serving the last year as a chairman. I will volunteer in the past for it, so I will volunteer to be VAB chairman again if there's a second for that.
I'll second that.
There's a second for that. Any other comments? Any public comment? Any objections? No objection? Okay, we also need to appoint a vice chairman to the VAB Value Adjustment Board.
I'll volunteer for that.
The new guy on the block? Congratulations. Thank you. You won't overstop. You'll find yourself doing it a lot. We have that. I have a second that. Is there any other public comment? Any objection? No objection? Okay, great. We talk here at this. Mr. Wayne, is this your phone?
It is. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Get situated up here for a second.
No problem.
Okay, we'll run into the pro- commissioners. Commissioner Hammond, you have a great one to do this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask the family of Captain Daniel Eggers, please come to the podium for a very special presentation. If you all will just stand at the podium, I'll read this resolution into the record and then we'll take a picture together and I'll have somebody say a few words. Thank you all for coming today. That's perfect, right where you were at. Well, this is a real privilege as a Cape Coral native, just like Daniel was, to be able to read this into the record and to recognize his service to our country. And so I'll read the resolution. It goes as follows. Whereas Captain Daniel W. Eggers, a proud native son of Cape Coral, Florida, honorably served his country as a member of the United States Army and as a Green Beret with the First Battalion, Third Special Forces Group airborne, based at Fort Bragg, North Carolina. Whereas Captain Eggers embodied the highest ideals of service, courage, and leadership, dedicating his life to the defense of freedom and the protection of others. And whereas on May twenty-ninth, two thousand and four, while leading his special forces team in Zabul Province, Afghanistan, Captain Eggers, along with three fellow service members, Sergeant First Class Robert J. Morgenson, Specialist Joseph A. Jeffries, and Navy Petty Officer First Class Brian J. Olet, made the ultimate sacrifice when their vehicle struck an improvised explosive device. And whereas Captain Eggers's extraordinary valor and dedication were instrumental in advancing the mission of freedom and stability in Afghanistan. And whereas in recognition of his heroism and the profound impact of his sacrifice, the United States military renamed the Kabul compound in Afghanistan as Camp Eggers in March twenty-two thousand and five, rather, a living testament to his leadership, compassion, and unyielding spirit. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners wishes to further honor the memory of this distinguished son of our community by dedicating a portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway in his name, ensuring that his service and sacrifice will forever be remembered by all who travel this road. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida, does hereby proclaim and dedicate a portion of Veterans Parkway as Captain Daniel W. Eggers' Memorial Highway in lasting tribute to his courage, leadership, and devotion to his country. It's duly executed this eighteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-five, and signed by our honorable chairman, Commissioner Kevin Ruane. Thank you all for your service. This is a replica of the sign that is going up on Veterans. It'll go up right near where the Veterans monuments are as you come off the midpoint bridge into the city of Cape Coral. That first stretch between the bridge and the toll booth is what we're going to dedicate in Daniel's memory. So we'd love to take a picture with you all of that sign.
If you just turn around and face the audience here, we have some photographers here. I'm sure you have some county members here. Love to capture this moment.
Excellent. And while you guys go back to the podium, we do have a special video presentation. In fact, you can just watch it from right here. We have a special video presentation we'd like to show you. There's the sign. It'll be right here by the Veterans Memorial. Bill, would you like to go to the podium and say a few words for us on behalf of your son?
Sure. Let me get you on the record. It was a real surprise that this occurred and the legacy of our years on Captain Eggers. The legacy is growing and growing and our gratitude and great greatness. We'll see that sign probably wherever this went as I will. And my wife, she can see that every day. That's funny. And we got a retired, this Camp Eggers hat. It's halfway around the world. Yes, it may be a four million dollar facility, but this is retired and we're going to have probably a hat made just like that sign. It just didn't do it right to have something around halfway around the world and we never even saw it. So anybody else have something? We are very, very army strong and we've been through a lot of stuff in our life and I just think about that. Everything's going well. It's a tough road and it's going to be a tough road and probably some of us will probably have a tough road, probably stand tall and army strong. No, we have not been, that's why I can say that. And thank you, it's here. I would thank you for being there as well. It's an honor to see each huge family and especially my neighbor, my wife. They've been a great help to us at the time that we lost each other. So beyond that, that's it.
God bless.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammond, for bringing that forward. Another hero here from Lee County we lost, so thank you for that. Move on to the recap. We have two items for revisions and corrections, C forty-one and C seven. Get a motion to that, please.
So move.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Any public comment on the corrections for C forty-one and C seven? Come back to the board any objections? No objection, motion carries. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. Any items be pulled by discussion by the board? Mr. Hammond?
I have none today.
Mr. Wayne?
No, sir.
Mr. Malika?
Zero. None.
Wow. Okay. And I have none. So a motion to approve the balance of items. So move.
Second?
We have a second. Any public comment? We have a couple cards. First one's Willie Joe Schottmeyer on C five, Willie Joe. And after Willie Joe, Marcia Ellis.
Good morning. Willie Joe Schottmeyer for the record. I noticed item five, approval partnership with helping nonprofits and various special leads and that you know that the property out in Suncoast was bought, not for myself particularly, but as a resource to be here fifty, a hundred, two hundred years from now. It's near the community center. My taxes were going up, but I haven't made any improvement. I haven't had any builder's care, never got back with me. So it is to get that property developed to be an asset, not to sit there. So as nonprofits are, money goes back in on a rotating basis as a continuum of care. That's why I was born. So I left a couple messages for you, Commissioner Hammond. I talked to your assistant and then I left your voicemail on your cell. We need to really work together. Charlie is overwhelmed, so Charlie don't make it. Charlie is, you know, it's us working together with Echo and different places for food, shelter as a true continuum of care. I just slipped City Gate. I said, hey, you guys can cover here. There's a few extra people today. I got to get to that meeting. So let's all work together, as I told our mayor and everybody else, so we can have a better community and a better world. As a prayer, let's solve the issues. I thank you for your time and God bless.
Thanks, Willie. Next, Marcia Ellis on number thirteen and fourteen. I don't know if you do them separately or together, but it's up to you.
Good morning. Jim, could you get the document camera up, please?
It's broken.
Oh, it's broken. Okay, so the document camera is broken. Marcia Ellis for the record. I have a copies of a recent order that I am sharing with each of the commissioners as well as one copy with the manager and one copy with the clerk as it relates to item number fourteen. This is quashing the rezoning for the southeast sewage plant on the conservation lands in East Lee County. So there are those copies. Thank you. I am speaking about item number thirteen, which is to approve the budget amendments for the recently approved budget, as well as item fourteen, to authorize the staff to pursue interim financing options for the southeast advanced water treatment facility or the sewage plant, which the rezoning has been quashed. So there is a judge's order quashing that rezoning and I want to make sure that that order is on record with this item. If I were able to project, I would call out that something I've pointed out many times, which is a deliberate, willful omission on the item summary to disclose the background implication of action as well as the financial information on these items in order for the public to be informed in a transparent way, as well as the commissioners to be informed on a transparent way. On both of these items, there is omissions that would inform that decision. This is a matter of transparency in how business is conducted in Lee County and it really, the lack of transparency leads to an absence of public trust. Also, on the consent agenda, that should really just be those non-controversial actions. And so what we're seeing time and time again are consent agendas of forty, fifty, sixty, seventy items, many of which are known to be controversial. I want to point out on the approval of the budget amendment that there are still unresolved legal and financial questions related to the Conservation two thousand and twenty funding, the monies that were raised at a point five millage of approximately sixty-five million dollars per year with a forty million dollar floor and a hundred million dollar ceiling for those funds to be replenished. And the capacity to address that through an amendment process is available and I urge that action be taken on that immediately. Again, that is to conform to ordinance twenty-one oh-two, that ordinance, as well as it is codified in the land development code. So I would ask that we do better in our transparency and that we disclose this information that is needed to inform decision making. Thank you.
Any other public comment on the consent agenda? For the consent or is that for something else? No other public comment on the consent? We'll close public comment, come back to the board. We have a motion, we have a second. Any objections? Any discussions? No objection, motion carries. Thank you. We have new items on administrative agenda, we'll go straight to public comments.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Amanda Swindle with the County Attorney's Office. I have your first three public hearings this morning and they have all been legally advertised. The first hearing is a petition to vacate the county's interest in approximately seven hundred feet of a fifty-foot right-of-way located at five four five zero Coconut Road in Benita Springs. The petitioner is the Pelican Landing Community Association and this action would allow the association to maintain and upgrade the road connecting portions of its property. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that no public use is intended for the property and there were no objections from public utility providers or regulatory agencies.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have one. I only have one more day left before I can say, I never saw this kind of thing before. Just for my one-year anniversary tomorrow. But I know when we're trying to buy easements, if the county wanted to get an easement like this, we'd normally have to write a check. And then we're giving this, we're not charging anything, we're not getting any revenue back for this road.
Correct. The county's interest is actually not perfected interest and in fact, the ownership is actually a little cloudy. Robert Clemmons from County Lands might be able to speak to your question regarding purchasing easements, but no.
We just wrote a check for a bunch of easements on the other agenda. So I'm just, just an innocent question. I don't object to the premise of it. I just didn't know why it wasn't, there wasn't a cost associated with it.
Our ordinance just provides the ability for this petition to go through and as long as there is no public use for that property and, you know, it goes through the vacation process.
Thank you.
If I could, David, just a little history there of Coconut Road. I talked about it a few years ago. Problem we've had with that road, the last, you'll see more items coming up, it's owned by three government agencies, Lee County, city of Benita Springs, the Village of Stearle. So in the past, trying to do improvements on that road, I think Lee County has thirty percent of that road and there's a little narrow right-of-way on the north side of the road, but just trying to get all three entities together to do improvements, which needed to be done up to forty-one. I've said the Village of Stearle and Benita, somebody needs to take a hundred percent ownership of it or just donate it back to the county or vice versa, but.
I know there's some entanglement between the three.
And that and down there with the development of the Ritz-Carltons, there's a lot of improvements going on down there, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Come back to the board for a motion.
I move approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Any objection? No objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Your second public hearing is to adopt a resolution approving the issuance of multifamily mortgage revenue bonds by the Housing Finance Authority of Lee County in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven million dollars for the Amarillis Park Place project located in Sarasota. Your approval is required under state and federal law, but these bonds do not constitute a debt of the county or create any financial liability.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Any public comment on this item? Number forty-seven. Come back to the board for a motion.
I'll move the item. Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Any objection? Objection, motion carries. Next one, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. Your third public hearing is to adopt a resolution approving the issuance of multifamily mortgage revenue bonds by the Housing Finance Authority of Lee County in an amount not to exceed twenty million dollars for the Pine Echo Apartment Project located in North Fort Myers. Again, your approval is required under state and federal law, but these are not a debt or a liability for the county.
I'll move the item.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any public comment on item forty-eight? Come back to the board. Any objection? No objection, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number forty-nine. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning. Morning, Commissioners. Joe Adams with the County Attorney's Office. This hearing has been properly advertised. I have both the updated publication and the project cost estimate for your clerk. Rob Price with DOT is going to briefly explain the project for you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Rob Price with DOT. This project is the construction of a signalized intersection in turn lane improvements at Lee Boulevard in Sunnyland in Lehigh Acres. The county's paying the developer, WMG Acquisitions LLC, to construct county roadway improvements at significant savings to the county. All the criteria for public-private cooperation in construction of county roads under section three-three-six dot seven-one Florida statutes have been met and we are here if you have any questions.
Any questions for staff? Any public comment on item forty-nine? Come back to the board for a motion.
I'll move the item.
Motion?
A second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Any objection? No objection, motion carries. Thank you. That concludes the public hearing. Welcome and carry. We've been taking care of. Commissioner, Mr. Hammond?
I have no items today, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wayne?
No items.
Mr. Malika?
No items.
Seriously. Thank you. You're being nice to me today, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner, appointments?
I have one reappointment, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to reappoint Justin Gardner to the local planning agency.
Second? Any public comment on that one?
No.
Any objection? Objection, motion carries. Commissioner Wayne?
Yes, I have several appointments. One to the Gat Island, it's Martin Krubs. Two to the local planning agency, Don Schrutenberg and Jennifer Span. And then to the Coast Advisory Committee, Holly Miller-Brent and Joe Crew.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. Any public comment? Any objection? Objection, motion carries. Mr. Malika?
I have five appointments. The first one is to the LPA, Stan Stouter. And then I have three to the Northeast Hurricane Bay MSTU, Karen Farrell, Stephen Mortensen, and David Bauer. And then for Parks and Recreation Services, Teresa Kane.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. Any public comment? Any objection? Objection, motion carries. Thank you. I do not have any. County Mandra, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no items today.
County Attorney, items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. We have one item for the board's consideration today. Commissioners, as you were briefed, we have recently received a petition from the Charlotte County Government pursuant to Chapter one sixty-four of the Florida statutes, otherwise known as the Florida Governmental Conflict Resolution Act. This is with regard to the county's recent adoption of the Boca Grand Parking Ordinance. Commissioners, the next step in this process is for you all to appoint two designees to represent the county at the early stages of this process. And we would respectfully request you appoint Commissioner Ruane and County Manager Dave Harner to represent the county in the first phase of this conflict assessment phase. Should it not be resolved at this level, then we'll proceed to the next level, which might be a joint meeting between the two commissions. But it is hoped that by a meeting of the minds that the circumstances that gave rise to the conflict may be abated at this level. So that is our respectful request that you appoint Commissioner Ruane and Mr. Harner and then also authorize Mr. Harner to work with the county manager for Charlotte County to set a mutually agreeable date and time for the conflict assessment phase meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion on that? Any public comment on that action?
One quick question. The County Attorney's Office is automatically party to this agreement, correct?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We would not sit as a designated member, but we would certainly be in attendance if Charlotte County sends their county attorney. The intent at this level is, I believe, to keep the lawyers out of it and perhaps have the administrators and the electeds work together to come to a meeting of the minds. We can certainly come in later, should that be necessary.
Thank you. Just clarifying. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any public comment on that action? Any other discussion? We'll tell them congratulations on getting buckies, so we're happy from there. We won't be complaining about that, so it's a good thing. So good luck with that. Mr. Wayne, thanks for the volunteer for the county. County Attorney, do you have any other act?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we're done with the agenda. We will move on to public comment by the community. We have, the first one's Thomas Milton from Hidden Harbor. And after Thomas, we have Kerry Bonwoski of Beauty Street in Lehigh. Good morning.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. About two months ago, a neighbor knocked on my door and told me about the proposed work to Ten Mile Canal. There was no community meeting with Hidden Harbor, no outreach from the county to our community about the project. So it's been tough trying to get involved in the project after it's already been approved and we're coming in a little bit late. I started by watching all the available workshops, news pieces, and reading everything online about it. At the February eighteenth workshop, the late Commissioner Greenwell said, I'm concerned about removing vegetation simply because now that house can see that house and they're not happy. That was their buffer. So I think if there's any alternative, no matter the dollar amount, to move it, to divert the water, makes way more sense than any of these options. I felt the same way when I first started looking at publicly available media from the county on the project. After reading reports and listening to workshops, it seems that the county is doing the fastest and cheapest solution that was presented by Mr. Ottilini instead of long-term comprehensive solution. In doing so, the county is ruining natural habitat that humans, manatees, birds, and fish enjoy. The Ten Mile Canal serves seventy square miles of Lee County and it became clear that vegetation removal only has a projected, estimated, hypothesized impact of three point six inches of surface water difference. Also, the vegetation removal has no impact on storm surge or hurricane events and may even have a negative impact from storm surge events with the loss of a natural wind barrier. The loss of natural habitat in my backyard is concerning, but the most concerning is the risk to all the residents along Ten Mile Canal that still persists after the vegetation will be fully removed. Again, this was the least effective solution presented by the Natural Resources Department. Lee County deserves a comprehensive solution with outcomes greater than a few inches of protection, not including storm surge events. It's clear that the commissioners want to get something done and do the best for your constituents. Doing the cheapest, fastest, least effective option is not the best for Lee County. Please halt the complete vegetation. Please halt the complete vegetation removal along the island on Ten Mile Canal and proceed forward with more impactful solutions. The work has already started, and it's going on currently right now. If the work doesn't get stopped, please don't forget about Ten Mile Canal. It needs a lot more work, even after this vegetation removal is already in progress right now. So, please just don't forget about Ten Mile Canal and keep moving forward with the project. Of course, we don't want the vegetation removal to happen, but it's already happening right now. So, thanks for the work on Ten Mile Canal, and looking forward to more updates about flood risk to it.
Thank you. Harry? And after Harry, Marcia Ellis.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sir.
Can I ask any Commissioners if we could get chickens in Lehigh Acres? So, we have a petition, you know.
That we got a lot of people in the area to sign for the approval for chickens. Everybody wants to have chicken for food on the table, and also the eggs, and also it's just therapy for a lot of people to have the chickens in the yard and everything. So, we have a petition going, and a lot of people agree, and they would like to have the chickens in the area, in the backyard, so.
So, this is public comment. This is your time. We don't have, we don't answer questions, but we'll be happy to get staff to get with you afterwards. If somebody from County Lands or Community Redevelopment can get with you in the back of the room here, they can explain to you the process. If you live in an agriculture area, you can have chickens in Lee County, but not in a residential area currently under the current zoning. So, staff will get with you after you speak. You have your three minutes now to speak, and they'll be able to provide you information what you can and cannot do within where you live. I'm not sure where you live. So, area maybe agriculture, you could have chickens, but it depends on where you actually live in Lehigh Acres.
It is residential.
Okay, so that's the problem. They'll be happy to give you that information after. You have three minutes to speak if you want to speak about that or anything else.
Well, I mean, Fort Myers got chickens.
Sorry?
Fort Myers got chickens.
It's a city, so City of Fort Myers is a separate city. They have designated areas that's been that way, but based on a grant they did. It's going to expire in a few years, I believe, but that's currently in the City of Fort Myers. But you don't, you live in the Lehigh Acres, which is uncorporated Lee County. So, we can have staff explain that to you and give you more information about what we can and cannot do in the process of getting that changed. If you want to change your zoning, the use of your property too.
Yes, so how could you go about doing it?
We're going to have, we can have staff talk to you after your three minutes is up. I just don't want to take your time away from you.
No, he says after the meeting.
Well, have somebody, somebody from Community Redevelopment get with them in the back and explain to them the process. Thank you, Harry. Thank you. Next, Marcia Ellis.
Marcia Ellis, for the record, and I'm speaking on three items. One is public participation and community engagement. The second is specifically on the animal control ordinance. And the third is also on the role of conservation, conservation lands, in supporting our wildlife in the area, including the federally endangered panther and gopher tortoise. So, I'm going to start out by saying with the animal control ordinance that has been, that's set for a public hearing on December second, I am very concerned, and I'm just preemptively stating, that improperly narrowing and constraining this controversial issue that has been brought before the community over and over and over of times for hundreds of people's public comment, I'm just going to preemptively say that that is improper. Right? We are rushing into an ordinance without having meaningful community engagement that would benefit the public interest. Community engagement is different than public outreach. Public outreach is the county talking. Community engagement means that you hear from a variety of stakeholders in the community, and they are giving you meaningful input, including young people, including Gen Z, including all of the various stakeholders in this community that care about animal advocacy. I also am concerned about a culture of intimidation and barriers that are being put up preemptively before this ordinance comes before each of you that are, it's tainting the process. It's making it harder for people to have a meaningful engagement with their government on such an important issue that touches every family. I also want to point out that there are real solutions that have been updated, that have been adopted by many, many communities, and that we look towards those communities for a way forward. Ways to authentically and specifically address the problems that are known to you with our shelter and with this animal control ordinance. There is much, much, much more work that needs to be going into it before it comes forward. So, I just want to make sure that we all understand that. The role of the public should be respected. We all have a voice, and we want, have things that we want to bring before you and share as a resource in this community. It is our responsibility. With that said, when we look at the role of animals and protecting wildlife in this community, we must have habitat and lands for to live on. Those are our Conservation Twenty Twenty lands. If we don't have habitat, and we don't have a prey base, then we are not meeting our legal and moral obligations to these species that have lived on our landscape long before we ever moved here. So, I, yes, thank you.
Okay. I just want to be fair to the other speakers here. Thank you. Next speaker is Rosemary Torreto. And after Rosemary, we have Laura Hepner. Good morning.
Good morning. I've lived here sixty years, and I've been up here before to speak about LCDAS. And I've been fighting this since twenty- twenty oh four, about LCDAS, and there's been no changes. You guys just don't want to hear us. Yous don't want to, you don't want to be the change for LCDAS. Now, I have four big dogs. I've, in the last two years, I've adopted three big dogs from LCDAS. My niece has adopted three big dogs from LCDAS, just so they weren't euthanized. They're all wonderful dogs. They, LCDAS said they were bad dogs. We got them home. No aggression, nothing. I don't know what's going on down there, but there needs to be changes. I say you hire somebody in a position to evaluate, go down there and evaluate what Mark Moore's position is, because I think he has too much on his plate and can't handle it. And I think you put, should put a woman in that position to oversee. Because I think it's all men in these positions, and men don't want to listen. So, why don't you put a woman in a position? I'm serious. Yous all can laugh, but I think a woman would do a better job. Because all these dogs, all these animals are being euthanized. Do you know the numbers there are? And these, these animals are getting three days to five days before they're euthanizing them. My two dogs would have been euthanized, and they're the most beautiful, loving dogs you'll ever see. But otherwise, they would have been euthanized, because down there, they're saying they were a threat. I just don't understand it, and I don't understand why yous aren't hearing us. Is it not important? Is building, building all these buildings more important than these animals? They get over eight million dollars a year in tax money, and the building is still the same as it was when I was here, when I, since I've been here. What was it built, in nineteen ninety-nine? It's still the same building. It's never been added on or anything. I mean, please, please, listen to us. We're tired of coming down here and pleading with yous. Please, one of yous, make the change. Only yous can do it. If we could do it, we would do it, but we can't. We need one of yous to help us make the change. Put people in the positions that love those dogs. That's the difference. We love those dogs. The people down there don't love them. It's just a job to them. It's just a job. They don't care. We care about them. I'm sure yous all have pets, and yous love them. I just don't understand. I just don't understand the compassion, no compassion, no empathy. So, please.
Next speaker, Laura Hepner. And thank you for adopting from our services. Thank you. Laura Hepner, and after that, we have Joyce Capano.
Good morning. Okay. My name is Lori Hepner. I'm with Animal Justice, and I'm just wondering how you can turn a blind eye to the plight of pets at LDS and the euthanasia rates. Pablo Durnall, Director of LDS, has a vote of no confidence by many. He was hired in two thousand fifteen, making over seventy-three thousand.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, just real quick, can I ask the county attorney a question? Is, is it appropriate, I feel so bad for our staff when people come up here and just absolutely name a staff member and then start laying out all sorts of personal information about them, and then disparaging their work product. Is it, I mean, is there any rules of decorum about that part of it? Or does our staff, just because they're public employees, have to basically be at the mercy of that? It's just hard when they name people by name and then start going after them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Regrettably, it's a bit of a fine line. For those of us in public service, you have to develop a bit of a thicker skin and tolerate such attacks as they may come. We hope that perhaps the public could constrain their comments to the subject matters at hand without regard to the personal attacks. And when those personal attacks cross the line, we would be happy to suggest to the chairman that perhaps the speaker has gone too far.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for asking. This is unfortunate. You think for asking for something, for someone to do something who wouldn't do the personal attacks.
You know, again, just to kind of close it real quick, I just, you know, I've worked with the people here at Lee County for twelve years now. They're amazing people with a heart for serving their community. They're the kind of people who will leave their families at home to come into the emergency operations center to try and save and protect the community during a hurricane. They're, they're fantastic people. They do their jobs with excellence. Nobody's perfect. But it's hard when people call them out by name and then personally go after them from the podium. We could have a great dialogue about problems that we want to solve as a community, but we could do it in a respectful way, in a way that's not necessarily disagreeable with each other. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Continue your.
Okay, this is all public information, by the way, according to the website, okay, for LCDAS. And, and so he was promoted and promoted and promoted again. And, and now he's at Park and Recations, and then to Animal Services, and then the Director of LCDAS with a salary. And, and, you know, something kind of smells, okay? With many atrocities committed to the test, pets in their care, how can you continue to employ this liability? He is a liability. We will continue to write and email all officials in Florida, and those, and all those are willing to help. The writing is on the wall with the passage of Troopers and Dexter's Law. The public is speaking. Are you listening? We want to put an end to the backyard breeding, and all breeders need to be licensed and taxed heavily. Hello, this is a revenue opportunity by the county. And where is the spay and neuter truck that we were promised last year? We will never go away, and we just want to achieve justice for these pets. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Next speaker is Joyce Capano. And after Joyce is Marcy Fernandez.
Good morning. My name is Joyce Capano. At the November four board meeting, a citizen was prevented from commenting on Agenda Item number seven to establish a public hearing. The citizen was not rude, did not use profanity, and was addressing the public documents attached to the agenda. She requested the proposed ordinance be returned for further consideration, and no public hearing be scheduled. The chair at that time had the citizen physically removed from the chambers. I believe you committed three violations of state statutes and your own administrative code. One, according to Florida State Statutes two eighty-six, the board is supposed to provide reasonable opportunity for a citizen to be heard. I don't think you did that. Two, I believe the board also violated its own rules in Administrative Code one dash three, which states, quote, "Each published agenda for a board meeting must include a period for public comment that must commence and conclude prior to the undertaking of the board of any action on the agenda." Three, I believe the board also violated Administrative Code one dash three. The board chair could have told the citizen to comment under public presentation of matters, but instead chose to have the sheriff deputies remove her from the chambers instead of escorting her to her seat. This action was uncharacteristic of prior meetings such as April one, twenty twenty-five, when the board allowed twenty-eight speakers to comment on setting a public hearing date related to, guess what, Gasparilla Parking Ordinance. There is a growing trend by politicians to stifle citizen input at public meetings. This has recently been seen in Cape Coral, Fort Myers Beach, and Lee County School District. Citizen engagement is the backbone of our democracy. Why are you afraid of citizen participation? Maybe if you listened, you wouldn't find yourselves in so many legal predicaments. We just want to engage. Thank you.
Next is Marcy Fernandez. If anybody could please silence their phones, and also we encourage no clapping, hissing, booing to other speakers to intimidate others, please. Marcy Fernandez. After Marcy, Lisa Cooper. Hi, welcome back.
Hi, good morning. I'm Marcy Fernandez. I apologize ahead of time. I'm not as prepared as I intended to be. However, I'm with Haven on Earth Animal League. We're a cat rescue in Fort Myers, Florida. We've been doing our work for seventeen years. We're a five oh one C three nonprofit. I'll just start by saying, just to, so you don't think I'm a crazy cat lady. I'm educated, four years of college, up until two years ago, had a full-time paying job in addition to doing cat rescue full-time. Our group annually rescues six hundred to seven hundred cats and kittens off of the streets of Lee County, gets them sterilized, gets them medical attention, gets them into loving homes. We also help many people who don't have the money to help their own pets or a cat that they see that's been hit by a car. There's no resources. We help with that. We're blessed and lucky to be able to do that. Seventeen, well, I've been doing this for twenty years. Started with another group. Things are not getting better. I think COVID was part of our downfall, but certainly it goes a lot deeper than that. We need more resources for spaying and neutering the animals. I know it sounds like we should have enough, maybe, to a lot of people. I also know it sounds like maybe, if you've never had to find a home for a cat or kittens, you may have no idea the degree of the problem that's out there. I would say to you that that's like maybe a parent who has a child with a handicap or a mental illness. If you've never gone through it yourself, you have no idea. I don't do this because I have nothing better to do. I don't do it because, you know, it fulfills me. It fulfills me to a degree that I'm helping to end some suffering in the world, but I would rather be laying by my pool, cleaning my house, doing my laundry, you know, spending more time with my daughter. So, I don't do it for myself. I do it for the animals. One thing that I have to say today, and I know you can't, maybe you can point me in the right direction on this. One idea that I have, which I think would be extremely helpful, if somehow, and I know I can't just wave a magic wand and get this done, but I'm willing to do the work if it's a possibility. If we had the ability, and I know it has to go through a process, to convince our taxpayers to allow us to put just five dollars on every tax bill that goes out there, and that money went strictly towards spaying and neutering, opening more spay-neuter clinics. That five dollars, which I think adds up to two million and change, possibly more. And that, you know, those facilities were available, our county facility. I know they're, they're sending out animals to other places to be spayed and neutered. They're paying more than they should be. So, if there was some way for us to get that on the tax bill, I think that would be a huge, you know, it'd be very clean, very streamlined. Here's the money. It's going to these spay-neuter clinics. We're getting, because the biggest problem with cats anyway, cats are my specialty, is people start feeding a stray cat. is people start feeding a stray cat, and the next thing you know, they've got a litter of kittens. And then there's another litter of kittens, and my time is up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lisa Cooper. After Lisa, Victoria Redstall.
Victoria's on her way. She got in a little trouble.
Okay. I thought I saw her back there. Claudia Jones. And after that, Cindy Freaks.
Good morning, Commissioners. Do you all have dogs? No? I'm here today to express my concern about the animals in the streets of this Lee County. It is a horrific situation, and I don't know if you're fully aware, but people are continuously calling about animals in the streets being hit by cars and suffering and dying from heat exposure, starving, thirsty, and become aggressive because of it. It's horrible in Bonita, Cape Coral especially, Lehigh, and pretty much all over Lee County. The dogs are suffering horrifically by living in the streets, and nothing has been done about it. This is totally unacceptable. It is not fair to these animals, who are so innocent and being dumped by so many. Why, I don't know. Why do they have dogs? A lot of people would rather just dump the dog than pay the fifty dollars that it costs to leave the dog at Lee County. Isn't it sad, but it's happening? I truly, really need your help to make this situation much better. We cannot continue to let this happen and continuously turn a blind eye. It is just not fair to poor, innocent animals. Parents of aggressive animals, I'm sorry, parents of aggressive animals, people don't want to walk their dogs anymore, and they say, "We've never seen anything like it." Come on, Commissioners, we can do better than us. I have rehomed a dog, and he's fine. People just dump them all over the place. Do yous have dogs? Would you want your dog to get lost in Lee County, kill it after one day? Come on, you know you wouldn't. Your dog gets drugged down a aisle just for them to kill it? Poor dog scared to death? We can do better than that. We don't have to have kill shelters. You're going to stop that. And I hope you understand that. Thank you.
Cindy Freaks, I believe it is.
She is not here either. She had to go.
Cindy still here? Cindy still here? Cindy Freaks? Jerry Sorelli? Good morning. Welcome back. You're back in town.
I'm back, yes. So, I've been currently coming here for about two years now with my concerns about LCDAS. I feel like pretty much everything's been falling on deaf ears, and not a whole lot's been accomplished, unfortunately. As far as euthanasia goes, please tell me how you can continuously euthanize totally adoptable animals when you have an adoption floor that's not been even half-full for over one year. And that is the truth. The fact that the funds are available and that all other options have not been utilized is unacceptable. Where are the dogs? Where are the transparency? Intake is not down this year? Please, somebody explain to me, because it's not making sense and it's not enough. Consistently in '23 and '24, you had a minimum of... Lee County had a minimum of forty-five to sixty-eight dogs on the adoption floor at all times. Tell me how, within one year, it's completely different, and nobody has answers, especially when every single shelter in the surrounding areas are completely full. Makes no sense. When I first started doing this, it was all about helping Lee County to become a no-kill shelter. I have done more than my due diligence. I have been from Manatee to Hillsboro, West Palm, Sarasota, Collier County, Hendry County, Lee County. I've spoken to many executive directors of these counties in efforts to take away everything that I could to bring back to Lee County and share with them how and why they could and should become a no-kill shelter. All I could get from the executive director is, "We practice public safety here." I say to him, "So, you can't prob..." This is tricky. "Practice public safety and become a successful no-kill at the same time?" I shared with him that it's very possible, and that I have spoken to so many that do and do it very well. I thought when you signed up to be an executive director and run a successful shelter, your commitment was to do everything in your power to save the animals. I don't believe Lee County even comes close. We currently have five pet stores in Lee County that are actively selling puppies. There was legislation for a ban in 2023 that I thought was a damn good one. Excuse my French, and I thought I would share that. It was proposed legislation to ban the sales of puppies and kittens in pet stores. The bill would prohibit pet stores from selling dogs and cats, and instead, the stores would be able to partner with animal shelters and rescue organizations to offer animals for adoption. That would be fantastic. So, instead of promoting puppy mills and outrageous breeding, pet stores would be able to sell and place fostered and rescued animals into loving homes. I would love that. Animals bred in mills experience severe cruelty, neglect. They are denied adequate veterinary care and the nutrition, exercise, and companionship that they need to thrive. I am not okay with that. I pray that you guys are not either. This can change, Commissioners. This has to change. I can't keep it going on, and we continue to turn a blind eye and do nothing about it. I have put in the time, the effort, the phone calls, the emails, the meetings. I am here today to please ask for your help. That's all I'm asking. I have a petition that has almost five thousand signatures on it, asking for the Commissioners to please help us. You can be their hero. You guys can make a difference. Please, thank you for your time.
Mary Bates, please. And after Mary Bates, Daniel Becker. Mary Bates here. Then Daniel Becker.
Good morning, Commissioners. With the right policies and practices in place, managing our county's animal shelters does not require the killing of cats and dogs. Communities across the country have demonstrated that humane, progressive approaches can both protect safety and dramatically increase life-saving outcomes. We have the opportunity to do the same here. By building stronger partnerships with rescue organizations, expanding foster programs, and making adoption processes simpler and more accessible, we can ensure that more animals leave our shelters alive. We can believe in change and work towards saving lives, not ending them. Increase our percentage of live release is not only possible, it is achievable with the following steps. Make adoption simpler and more accessible. Expand and support foster programs that give animals a safe place to stay while waiting for their permanent homes. Empower animal control officers as community educators, not just enforcement personnel. Ensure that local laws help keep families and pets together, especially during times of hardship. Our team of dedicated volunteers is ready to continue doing the work, saving lives, not ending them. But we need supportive policies and county leadership committed to humane, effective shelter practices. Together, we can create a system that reflects our community's values and gives every animal the chance it deserves. In closing, we have repeatedly encouraged leadership to work with our community partners and best-practice organizations to move Lee County forward to a true no-kill model. Unfortunately, these efforts have fallen on deaf ears. It's time for a change at the top. We need new leadership and an appointment of a new shelter director, someone who will prioritize humane conditions and transparency. We are hopeful that a new commissioner will show greater interest in working with the taxpaying citizens of Lee County to ensure compassionate and accountable animal welfare practices. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Daniel Becker. And after Daniel, Betsy Vaughn.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Becker. I'm a resident of District Two. We are a little less than a year until the 2026 elections. Where voters in a state-sponsored referendum will have an opportunity to express their support or rejection of Lee County Commissioners being elected from single-member districts. The Lee County Code of Ethics states, "No local officer, as defined by state Florida statutes, shall incur any obligation of any nature which is in conflict with the proper discharge of his or her duties in the public interest." The code also says, "Under political activity and unlawful acts prohibited, it is unlawful for the authority of this position to secure support for or oppose any candidate, party, or issue in an election or affect the results thereof. Any person who violates any provision of this section shall be subject to disciplinary action, up to and including dismissal from county employment." Under state statutes, a local officer, which is covered in your code, is defined as an elected official. This definition specifically includes those elected or appointed within municipalities, county, and other local government entities. Gentlemen, I am not an attorney, but sure looks like by state and county laws and regulations, you cannot use your positions as Lee County Commissioners to endorse or oppose a voter referendum. You certainly can and should express your position as private citizens. I know in the past, you have been lenient in following these requirements. But as a concerned constituent, a word of caution. This time, a lot of people will be watching, so please act responsibly. Thank you for your continued efforts.
Betsy Vaughn. And after Betsy, Carol Scott.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Betsy Vaughn, and I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Lee County. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes political responsibility through informed and active participation in all levels of government. League principles parallel the Tenants of Florida Sunshine Law, which was enacted in the public interest to protect the public from closed-door politics. The Florida Sunshine Law states that government bodies, such as the Board of County Commissioners, must allow members of the public to be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard on business before the body. Lee County Board of County Commissioner rules allow any person wishing to address the commission on scheduled agenda items to speak for up to three minutes. During the time, of course, set aside for public comment, these speakers must complete and turn in a Commissioner Speaker card. On November 4th, Chair Kevin Ruane recognized a member of the public to speak on Agenda Item Seven. The speaker's topic was on her card. Within moments of the start of her comments, she was interrupted and informed that she could not speak on the specifics of the proposed ordinance because only the setting of the hearing date was on the agenda. The speaker immediately began to clarify her request to table the hearing date until after the proposal had been sent back to committee. She was speaking on why the hearing date should be postponed, clearly within the parameters of the rules of the commission. Without allowing the speaker to further illuminate her request, the chair motioned for security to come forward to remove her from the room. Prior to the speaker being called to the podium, the chair had reminded those in attendance that all public comments should be addressed to the commission as a whole and with civility. The speaker adhered to those guidelines. The League has participated and observed county commissioner meetings for many years. We believe that the removal of the speaker was inconsistent with the usual treatment of public speakers and may have dissuaded others from stepping up to speak. We urge you to proactively encourage public comment and then to truly hear and respect issues brought to you by constituents and treat all members of the public with civility. Thank you.
Carol Scott. And after Carol Scott, Catherine Walsh.
Good morning. Thank you for coming down.
Hello again. How's everybody? I'm Carol Scott, a resident of Mount Lachey and the president of the Civic Association. We have wonderful news to share with everyone, especially to those who have not come to Mount Lachey lately. The demolition of three dangerous buildings are now complete. These buildings have been heartache, sadness, and daily reminders of the destruction of Ian, Helene, and Milton. Thank you, Commissioners, and the various county departments that made this happen. With these buildings down, gone, now, one, as one approaches the gateway of Mount Lachey, you will see a breathtaking view of the Mount Lachey Pass and the waters we are known for. The view is open, bright, and clean, and brings a happy smile and welcomes all to come to Mount Lachey for shopping, boutiques, and restaurants. The island residents are looking forward to our continuous partnership for cleanup, improvements, and programs, and the word of the day, community engagement. We are eager to further the Pine Island Road Public Space Urban Strategy that the University of Florida Fiber Team and the Collaboratory have provided and contributed with us. The Mount Lachey Civic Association and Islanders would like to extend an invitation to everyone to our Christmas tree lighting on Saturday, November 29, 6 p.m. at sunset. We hope to see you there, and we so look forward to partnering with you on our new strategy. Warm wishes to all, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you for the invite. Catherine Walsh.
Good morning, and my condolences to the board on the loss of your colleague and also, in particular, Commissioner Ruane, on your family tragedy. My husband and I have had the pleasure of working with you out in Mount Lachey, and we're truly sorry about the news of your family. I am a board member of the Mount Lachey Civic Association, and in that capacity is why I'm here today. But I'm also a member of the Lee County Historical Preservation Board, and it's an honor for me to serve in both of those capacities. So, first of all, I want to say thank you. I also wear another hat. I run the social media channels for the Mount Lachey Civic Association. I appreciate so much the funding that you provided to allow the Ian buildings to come down. The day I posted the Brown Building demolition, I had almost a thousand comments of people just saying, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." And so, I want to reiterate that to you. Looking forward, I want to inform you of some of the things I'm bringing up at the Historical Preservation Board on the behalf of Mount Lachey. According to their code, which they serve under you, is my understanding, Section 22171 talks about the financial assistance that the HPB can request from the county, state, and federal government for historic districts. We are starting to have those conversations at the HPB to help us continue to restore Mount Lachey. We are also asking that the HPB pay particular attention to Section 22243, unsafe structures, 22244, emergency work, and 22245, demolition by neglect. Many of you are familiar with the Old Fish House. This is gang symbolism on the outside of the Old Fish House, smack dab in the middle of our town. There are squatters living in here, and Lee County has had to come out and arrest numerous people for destruction in Mount Lachey, something I never thought I would see in my lifetime. Therefore, I, as Carol stated, appreciate your continued assistance with us in doing these things. Also, be open to what we, as the HPB, will be bringing to you in the future. Again, I'm speaking on my behalf, not them as a group, but I have been hammering this. I don't think they've been pleased with it. I don't think they've been pleased with me hammering this at every meeting, but I've been bringing this up at every meeting and appreciate all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's my last card. Any other speakers at this time? Did I turn a card in? We'll come back to the board after the board have a comment. Good? Okay, we'll come back to the board. Any other discussion? I just want to clarify for the record, we, Lee County doesn't hire people based upon gender. I know that one lady's effort, she said her fellow effort, 2004. We actually had female employees and directors of the Animal Services, I remember from 2004, Donna Ward was one that was terminated, who fled to stay with her coworkers. So, we had many females in that position over the years. So, again, thank you, and we are adjourned.